I think played last week. Get a motion to approve. First and second, all those in favor?
All right.
Now you're up.
Thank you Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight I bring before you an approval to request award for the Camden County Landscaping Services to Brightview Landscaping Services. We've had two RFP cycles go out for this landscaping services. On the second cycle, we had three companies that had bids that were accepted. Camden County Building Landscaping requires an extensive redirection and through our scope of work, we have drafted with the county administration. This is to bolster the curb appeal and preserve the value of our county assets. Brightview, we have contacted their references. They have gleaming and glowing references. They are also a nationwide company with in landscaping, commercial landscaping. They have a vast portfolio across the country and here locally in the Southeast. They were the most responsive and responsible agency that had responded to our RFP. The department recommends a motion to approve the award for landscaping services.
To Brightview?
To Brightview, yes sir.
Why do you think so? Go over the other side.
The other two are AGS, which is here locally, and then the other is out of Brunswick.
What was the material differences, I guess? Just significant. You're talking almost ninety thousand dollar difference.
Correct. We've contacted Brightview and they assured us that they can provide all the services that were in our RFP in scope of work. They gave us a schedule of throughout the week and a monthly schedule as to how they were going to accomplish every aspect of our RFP in the scope of work. So they left no question with neither me or Commissioner Lano-Mackey as to their ability as to perform all of the scope of work for our RFP.
All right. Any questions from Mr. President? Motion to get a motion. Motion to approve as presented. Second. I have a first and a second.
I would like to make one comment. I think we're getting up there where we need to start looking into the in-house. Your price for the process.
Great point. Did you?
Brightview still is under what our price that we had discussed during our budget as far as what it would take to bring us in-house. And they have a large fleet already established in Jacksonville that is used to perform the services here.
Yeah, I think over a period of time, the initial startup, yes, but I don't think it will do better than them.
I think that is something, yeah, I think that's something we can continue to evaluate.
Right.
It is three years with options for fourth and fifth.
Well, is this just for the grounds or is this for the right of way as well?
This is just for the grounds.
Grounds. Thank you.
All right, well, you know, I guess just want the quality there.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you have a motion first and second? All those in favor?
Aha.
All those in favor? Mark the phone.
Thank you gentlemen.
Motion carries. All right, now we've got the Sheriff's Office approval of request of purchase of boat engine for replacement of the one I suppose that was restored with the vote safe or something.
Yes, it's, um, it's reminded.
Right. Could I get a motion on this side?
Motion to approve.
Second. Do you have a first and a second? All those in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, at this time, if not get a motion to appear in the regular meeting and convene solid waste authority meeting. Motion to adjourn the regular meeting, convene solid waste authority meeting.
Second.
Do you have a first and a second? Those in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously. We're now in a solid waste authority. Could I get a motion on the adoption of the agenda? So moved. I'll second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously. We now have an agenda.
Had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the May seventeenth.
It's on June seventh, that's it.
What? Are you reading wrong?
No, I was.
It's not being in the world. I've been wondering, it's June, the June seventh. June seventh. June seventh, solid waste authority meetings. Uh, the corrections additions, if I could get a motion please.
Motion to approve. Second. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously. This brings our first public comments section from the solid waste authority. Items on the agenda. Anyone registered?
Yes, sir.
Anyone desired to address the board on the solid waste agenda? Seeing none. Mark the up.
Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, good evening Commissioners. Um, approval of the repair of the left final drive motor on a twenty fifteen Cat D five dozer for Mezzi Brothers Brunswick for the C and D land. This is a twenty fifteen Cat dozer with a left final drive went out in it. So I'm asking you to approve the repairs so they can get the parts in and ordered and we can get it back on the machine, keep it running, so.
Trying to get to the total cost of the repair.
Twenty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Did we know what happened to the final drive?
Uh, the seals were cut and the oil drained out of it and everything. We had checked this motor prior to that and on a routine check basis, but during the usage.
Did it have the final drive sale?
Somewhere, yes, someplace in the final drive, it got wrapped around and cut the seal and gave out on him when he was operating it up on the landfill.
About particularly, was it something that could be prevented?
I'd like to say yes, but we did check it, you know? Um, how often they check and how good they check them and check them to see, uh, don't know if it was something that occurred while he was in use or something that's been leaking over time, but we did not.
Well, having done checking the final drive, it's not like checking the oil.
No, it's, it's a little bit harder, but we do have a routine and a system that we do check these things, so, um, so, yeah, I'm going to emphasize the fact that.
Procedure in place, just trying to.
Oh, yes.
Good to go. All right, any questions from Mr. Barfield?
How often do y'all typically change the final drive fluid?
Uh, typically, I knows we're changing them about every two thousand hours or so on it.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, so we do pull a sample and we send it off also. Uh, well, we do change the fluids, so we get a metal analysis and an oil analysis out of that gear oil that we put in it. So, um, so, yeah, that's all part of our check too, that when we service that machine, well, depending on the hour level service it's being held at, we'll pull a sample and change the oil and send it off.
It's known as SOS, that synchronized oil sample.
Right.
You give back a detailed report.
Yeah, you know, let's. Well, didn't have a failure, but you know, something where the seal goes out, the oil runs out.
That's.
That's going to do it.
Yeah, that'd be a complete failure.
All right, any other questions or thoughts? Well, you would think as expensive these machines were, there would be a sensor or something built into these things.
They actually put a guard there to protect them, but it's like everything else, all it takes is one little piece of wire. You get it in that guard.
That guard also makes it exponentially difficult to check.
Well, to see the leakages, that's true, you know, of course, you check it from the outside.
Right.
You know, out front. But, um, but they, they are guarded. They're known as the guarding, the hill guarding system.
That stainless steel wire we get in, we call it air conditioner wire. That stuff is tough too.
What's, what's the life like of this dangerous, I'm serious.
You look at it, um, it looks pretty rough, but it runs really well. Um, it's a.
How likely?
It's got. Nine thousand, it's got nine thousand, just under nine thousand five hundred hours, so, you know, we are, but it, it runs well for what we do and most of the time it's on the slopes and grading the road and pushing dirt, you know, so.
Normally, you could get fifteen thousand hours on one, you know, if it's, if it's main thing, unless it's in heavy service, you know. And that's, that's the roughest service just to actually put one in.
Okay. Well, I'm assuming the twenty-six thousand dollars a machine's worth that.
So, yes.
All right. So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Tim.
All right. Can I, uh, at this time, uh, could we get, are there any public comments? If not, could I get much of adjourned solid waste authority meeting, reconvene the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Carry you down.
Number fourteen is approval of the repair of left final drive motor on a twenty fifteen Cat D five dozer from Mezzi Brothers Brunswick, Georgia for the C and D land.
All right, could we get a motion this side please? To approve. Second. Got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aha.
Thank you Commissioners.
Yes, sir. Motion carries unanimously. This time it brings us to our reports.
Um, I have no changes to the calendar, but I would like to ask, is there anyone here from the Sheriff's Office for our executive session? I don't see anybody and I just want to make sure we don't drop if it's not necessary.
True. Is there someone you can call real quick?
I'm trying.
Maybe, or who would it be?
She didn't answer. Um, I would think Dane.
Dane, yeah. He would love, he's not a sheriff's employee, but he would be there.
He's usually the one.
I tell you guys.
If you have a phone number there, you think you could try to call in this before we adjourn?
All right, we don't, we won't have an executive session if, uh, we're not going to be here.
I'm set open, but I'm trying to get a hold of her.
Well, we'll give them a minute and see if they can.
We do have a few public comments, so.
Yeah, well, at this point, we can, uh, ask for any, uh, public comments.
I do have a few, could you have a?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, the first will be Ms. Janie Everett.
Good evening. My name is Janie Everett and I'm here to represent Thicke Hall Memorial Project and to request that the Board of Commissioners support us in our effort to, um, to, to create a Thicke Hall National Memorial here in Camden County. We are approximately seven years into the Thicke Hall Memorial Project and that project was always planned to remember and honor the victims of the Thicke Hall explosion and all those that saved lives. And we began this project in twenty fifteen with a five-year plan, which would have taken us to the fiftieth anniversary to begin to yearly honor and build from the local to the state to the national level. Right now, we have a museum in Kingsland and every year we do have the commemorative ceremony, but we actually have a plan. The final portion of the project is to plan, build and endow a Thicke Hall Memorial, National Memorial. And we wanted to establish the memorial along Interstate I ninety-five. We needed to obtain sixty acres of land and the sixty acres of land should go to the National Park Service for the Thicke Hall Memorial National Park. So we need the support of the Camden County Commissioners in order to bring this national honor here. Um, there are a lot of national memorials. Some are created and established through congressional approval. I know there's one that was approved directly by a president and that was Pearl Harbor, but these would be under the national, our plan is to put ours under the National Park Service so that we could possibly tap into, um, I think in twenty, twenty nineteen, they brought in nationally over the two hundred sites in the national memorials, forty-one billion. The last count that they had, they brought in twenty-eight billion. And any, um, business or city location that's within the sixty mile radius of the National Park Service or National Monument benefits economically from a national memorial. So this would be a national capital investment for us, but we need you all to come on board and, you know, help us. Um, I know President Trump said that he wanted the, um, National Park Service to do a feasibility study. Um, they've changed hands since and we've been kind of bogged down, you know, with every change of every administration, but we need the support of you all locally, you know, as the leadership of Camden County. If there's any way that we can work maybe with the JDA and, and with the county to come along with a plan, a plan of attack, because right now we're at the national level, we're trying to get the thirty people, the Congressional Gold Medal and establish this national park. So it would be something that would be beneficial to the young and old, the healing that this tragedy started and also an economic impact for the region. So I'm asking that you all work with us. We are a nonprofit organization. Every dime that we have has gone into this project. Uh, we have established the museum in Kingsland, but that's only temporary because the National Monument would have a, um, on the sixty acres, there would be a national monument to the workers, a museum that would honor and remember the sixteen cities, fourteen hospitals and plant area and the education center. And what people don't understand is in that education center, we need to bring, bring to Camden County, one way or the other, we need to bring the seventy thousand page court case, Flossy Marie Massey versus the United States of America. It's a famous case. It was started through this, um, Thicke Hall explosion and that's what nine eleven was, their settlement was based on what Joe Justice wrote. And so our people need to learn the truth and also in that education center would be oral history, the people telling their story in their own words. So I ask for your support. I'd like to be able to present the plan to you. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Something a little different this time.
Okay.
Do y'all have the sixty acres identified?
No, we don't. We, we had an area thawed out off of exit twenty-two. It was for sale. Um, we talked to all twenty-eight owners from exit twenty-nine down to exit three and we only had one person that proposed to let us have twenty-five acres, you know, given to the National Park Service. Um, but then that land was, um, already allocated to someone else in that project. They moved forward with it. It wasn't exactly on the interstate. And then other people were talking about investment. The area that's two, when you're going north or when you're coming south into Camden County, we wanted off of Horse Stamp Road, just as you exit, you would be facing right at the interchange. Um, that was a hundred and eighty-one acres of land. We only wanted sixty of it. Uh, we had found a buyer for, for the land, um, out of, um, Mar-a-Lago, Florida, that was going to purchase the land for us and then somebody came along and they purchased the whole entire one hundred and eighty-one acres. So we, we know that the interstate was not here when I ninety-five, when, um, Thicke Hall exploded.
Right.
That was one of the lessons learned. We want to put the, um, the monument or the national memorial on I ninety-five. That would give us access to a possible, possible, um, half million people or a million people a year visiting it.
I do, uh, uh, I guess, is there someone, are y'all looking for sixty acres deal? Are y'all still kind of?
Yes, we're still.
Why is it sixty acres we started figuring out?
Well, we wanted to have sixty acres and develop forty acres and quiet twenty acres because we want to be able to, to put on the site. We wanted to be able to put the monument, a museum and an education center. The rest of the area would be like, um, you know, gardens and, and different things, but we wanted to, uh, area quiet or buffer around it so that when this area is built up that you would not have, um, businesses or, or, you know, up on the park itself. Like a natural area.
Does anyone else?
Janet Heath. You have some remarkable citizens in Camden County with amazing foresight and endurance and I thoroughly support Thicke Hall Memorial and hope the county can work with Janie Everett Turner-Brew. My name is Janet Heath. I'm a founding trustee of the Woodbine Public Library. I live in incorporated, unincorporated Camden County, but close enough to the city of Woodbine to be proud of our county seat town. And I hope that all our commissioners will work to make our town a showcase for the county. Um, in September, Woodbine Public Library moves into its third year serving North Camden citizens. Our business plan is to increase library hours and to pay our staff competitive salaries. Currently, we have two library assistants working weekly nineteen hours at eleven dollars an hour. One fortunately lives in Woodbine, a short drive and pays childcare. Another comes from Saint Mary's so much, so she must work at least one hour of each four hours shift just to buy two gallons of gasoline to make it to and from. She also is a full-time college student paying tuition. These two women make it possible for twelve hundred Woodbine citizens and ten thousand North Camden citizens to reach a full-service library at half the gas cost and time of driving to Kingsland or Saint Mary's. Our North Camden Library should not be punished for its careful conservative financial management by being cut from the FY two oh two-three Camden County budget because we have a reserve fund allowing us to grow. Our funds come from Camden County, from the school board and from many private citizens, donations, from grants, from fundraising, cultural arts events and sales of donated books. Those are not continual annual support funds. Three Rivers Regional Library System has supported our Woodbine Public Library over and beyond, not only with new books, CDs, DVDs, computers, printer, copier, internet access payments. All of those things come directly from Three Rivers, not out of three thousand, thirty thousand that the county taxpayers give us, but the regional direction director in addition currently serves as our library manager at no additional salary from local funds. There are six counties in the Three River Library System with nine libraries. He cannot be the manager for each one of those libraries, so other people pay for their manager, but he has helped us tremendously. This holds true for Three Rivers Regional Library staff who drive to Woodbine from Jessup to cover staffing shortages, special programming and computer services. So our library does not function on just citizens' taxes of thirty thousand from Camden County Commissioners, but we cannot keep the library open without your continual annual support as you have given us in FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Part of our long-range planning with the funds that we have on hand from citizens' donations is to use the citizen private funding to create an endowment for future preservation and endurance of the library. The building donated generously by the Woodbine City Council is now valued at five hundred thousand dollars. It is owned by the Board of Trustees, so we must have a reserve for future roof or AC or plumbing, major repairs and for expansion of this library. We are obligated to the Georgia Public Library Service for the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the renovation cost of the old firehouse here in Woodbine. And we risk losing the support to the county given by the Georgia Public Library Service through Three Rivers Regional Library System if we do not have a fiscally, a strong annual funding from the county. We thank you very much for your support.
Well, uh, ask you a question, I'm going to comment on this. Now, this has kind of been back and forth for three years now.
Yes.
As a founding member, I clearly recall that this was originally brought up. It was just one time, it was a one-time deal for thirty thousand dollar seat, let it is, I recall.
I would love, Commissioner Blount, for you to find in the minutes where any trustee told you that we were only asking for thirty thousand dollars because every library in the state of Georgia is funded.
Well, again, let me just say this.
Public funding.
I, I know, everybody was here at that point in time. Am I the only one that remembers it as, it was a, what was it, a one-year thirty thousand dollar?
Here, I don't look at it in minutes, to be honest.
I mean, I, I know that it was, because I, in the budget, in the budget process, it was. And, you know, we had code, we had several things and, you know, we tried to, the point of trying to make it, we never, we never, to my, to my knowledge, and I'm pretty certain about this, there was never a commitment from the county to be funded it for thirty thousand dollars every year. There was a thirty thousand dollars and then came back and asked for it again and was asked for it again. So I just want to point that out. I'll see if I can get this picture and look it back up. I'm sure that it could be found on the tapes, you know, but I, I just, I do, you know.
Well, Commissioner Blount, I do know that the first, and you perhaps have funded us four years, I needed to check that and not quite sure, but I do know we were on the special appropriations page, um, along with, um, a large sum of money for real estate. So our little thirty thousand sat there on the special appropriations page.
Okay. I'll research it, I swear on researching.
In AC.
What, what commitment we made.
Right, right.
While I was there, we did that and that.
Well, I really would hope that we could meet with you after this budget cycle. I know you're tremendously busy and work out the agreement that the library, this Woodbine Public Library can stand as however we need to arrange it, as a source in North Camden, supporting the Camden County Public Library because they support us, we support them by providing extra services in this north end of the county, which are extremely important for our citizens in the north end. That's all a part of making us a better county seat town. And do you know that our library coming on board provided the last county seat in Georgia with the library? Every other county seat in the state of Georgia, a hundred and fifty-nine counties had a library in the county seat, so.
I have one question for you.
Okay.
Does Woodbine, what does Woodbine contribute to the library?
The Woodbine, very fortunately, gave us a building that had been empty since the nineteen eighties, so.
They, they didn't provide current funding?
That building is valued now at five hundred thousand dollars. We could not have that library with, at the cost that we got it. We could not have that library with, at the cost that we got it, without having that building from the city of Woodbine. They are supporting us in other ways, but not with annual fiscal money because they do not have it. The library is not-
I guess, I thought I wanted to make is that, being that it's so tremendously beneficial to the citizens of Woodbine.
And North Camden County.
Let me finish. We're not, we're not Woodbine at the moment, but it being beneficial to the city of Woodbine, I would have thought some of the citizens of, of Woodbine would be pressing the city of Woodbine and their council members to support you financially. I understand the bill is worth five hundred thousand dollars, but it's, I get that, you know, that you, that's probably expensive, it's been a money renovator.
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which we are committed. If we do not maintain that library for twenty years, it has to be paid back to the state.
My other point as well, so you, you, you made it worth five hundred thousand dollars, but any event, let, I'm going to get this picture to see if we can do a little more research on, on how those inspections went, so we can-
Mr. Chairman, a quick question.
To meet with us after so we can figure out how we can make this an annually funded thing in support of Camden County.
Well, I can't, we can't commit, we can't commit, just so you know, future commissions, but, but-
Are you, are you committed to supporting Camden County Public Library?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, let me make a comment real quick. When this thing first started, um, I'm worried about the fact that y'all need, the Woodbine Library needed to become a part of the Camden County Library. If, if, if it was a branch of the Camden County Library, we would not be having this discussion.
We need to talk more with Three Rivers about the organization. We are a branch library in the, in the, in the description of Georgia Public-
But you are not a branch of the Camden County Library.
We are currently for the past two years on the budget page of Camden County Library and the one check, well, four times a year, Camden County cuts a check to go to the Camden County Public Library, they cut one check. The funding comes mostly three hundred thousand plus another seventeen thousand increase this year to Camden County Library and the thirty thousand has to come to Woodbine because they have to show in their budget that they're paying staff in Woodbine and they're paying staff in Saint Mary's.
All right, this, this is one of the reasons we don't do this during meetings, but I'll tell you what, like I told you, I'd be happy to meet with you. I'm going to get this bishop to pull, pull some, uh, recordings and minutes on that. And, uh, just, I doubt it, doubt it, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Trevor, any questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. I know when we met during our budget cycle, we, uh, asked Mr. Moxley if he could provide the data on the demographics as far as the users of the Woodbine Library and if they resided, you know, inside city limits of Woodbine or if they were coming from unincorporated areas, just to kind of give us a breakdown of, of who the end users were. Has that data been provided? Um, I may have missed it if it came through in an email.
No, I think these, I think his response when we talked about that, it would be probably based on your zip code. And beyond that, I don't know that he could get any more detail than that, but that's, has he gotten back with you, was he on any of that?
No, and the data that I have seen from Three Rivers is by zip code and of course, Woodbine's zip code number is extensive, it goes out like District Two, District One, um, and parts of District Three, you can see White Oak, you can see. So before the library was open, we had about five hundred users of Camden County Library in this north end. We now have added another two hundred people in this north end who have a Woodbine library card. We have an enormous num, every day from five to fifteen people come into that library and when special programs, the library is filled.
All right, let me see, I'm going to cut it, I'm going to cut this off.
Thank you.
And then we'll, like I said, we'll follow up and I, I, I will be with you, anybody else that wants to. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll set something up.
Thank you very much, but we do need funding this year.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else?
Yes, sir. And we will be moving the executive session to Thursday, Special Meeting.
Don't worry. So we will not be having an executive session.
Yes, sir.
And, which means that at this point in time, that I get a motion for, uh, for adjournment? Move.
So moved.
Everybody wants to tell you. First and second, all those in favor? Motion carries you down this thing. I keep thinking of the question.